This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, maybe. We'll record this part.
Well, good. No one on the recording will know that I was not late tonight, right? We'll look at the surrounding transportation system. So we looked at how much right of way is there? What's filling the right of way now, both from a width perspective, but also pavement types? Are there gravel streets? Are there chip seal streets? Or is there urban gutters and ditch drainage? So all of those things kind of filter in, not only to what we'll ultimately set forth as a concept, but also we'll talk a little bit about phasing as well, because generally you don't want to start a development at a corner where you've got to do a bunch of street improvements, extend a bunch of water lines and sewer lines, because as you guys know, that stuff's expensive, right? So generally, that's where we start, is kind of looking at the physical existing conditions. And then on the next slide, we'll get into, still we're kind of in this input mode. Here, we've looked at kind of the traffic that currently exists. So one of the things I think of, and you know, I spent 15 years working for a city. So these are the types of things that I would think about when developments would come to me for review. So yeah, if we build out this entire property, what is the demand, the traffic going to influence? What do I need to know as a city? What should I require from a street improvement perspective, right? So we'll get into that a little bit more, what we're projecting. But for now, just to kind of make sure we're on the same place. So Kansas Department of Transportation has approximately 1,800 vehicles running north-south, 755 east-west, and then 65 north-south on 15th Street. So that's our baseline. So we'll start playing with concepts and projecting the increase, and we'll talk about that here once I show you the concept. So again, we want to be respectful and acknowledge the surrounding land uses. So we obviously, to, we're currently zoned right now, R1, low-density residential. To the north, we have a combination, again, we're a pretty big piece of property. So you're going to have multiple, your county zoning, R3, and there is a piece of your housing opportunity overlooked. To the east, we're R1, low-density. To the south, we've got some R2, medium-density, and some public use. And then west, we are, obviously, there's a lot of unincorporated property there. So county zoning, but there is some R1, low-density residential as well. So physical conditions, we're definitely looking at, we've talked about those. But again, when we're doing developments like this, we're trying to, you know, do as much at one time as possible. So we've looked at kind of the long-term adopted plans that the city has. So we've looked at the 2022 comprehensive plan. We've looked at the Housing Assessment Tool that the city completed, I believe, in 2021. And here, we're looking for the goals that we can help achieve through this development. And when you guys, how many of you guys were around for the comprehensive plan? It's 2022, all.
Actually, I think there's only two people here that are part of that.
You guys missed the funnest part of being on a plan. But comprehensive plans, what they're supposed to do is they're supposed to represent kind of a consensus vision for our community. So we, whether we're working for a city partner or a private land developer, one of the first places we go, because it should not only serve to kind of guide you guys as you guys are making land use decisions, and your staff, when they're doing the daily work, but they should serve as a private investment tool as well. So we on our side, and you know, our clients on the private side, they're choosing about, you know, they're choosing where to invest and how to invest in cities based largely what's in those plans. So we'll talk a little bit about that, but there's definitely a support for a wide variety of housing and neighborhood types. So again, ranging from traditional all the way up to kind of more modern subdivisions, housing for all ages and income groups, neighborhoods with walkable destinations. And the comprehensive plan supports density and a mix of land uses to promote active transportation. So this is known as the hit group of transportation. And according to that Housing Assessment Tool that was done in '21, the needs that were identified for that include low and moderate income, single-family housing, senior housing, and apartments. So all of that, combined with all the physical improvements, are the inputs, the background information we collect, digest, and then turn it into something else. So I think that's the last of the inputs, Josh. We'll see if I remember. Yeah, so it's, we've been working on it for a little while. So all of that results in what we would, the next phase is the concept land use plan. So here, we're planning with both, we call them technically. We'll lay out some major transportation, street networks, and then we start kind of playing with where these land uses are. So. Yeah, I'm ready. So we use land use types, you're going to see, and I'm assuming you guys all have seen the concept land use in preparation of this meeting. So, but I'm going to spend a little bit of time kind of describing the different land uses that are on that, and that way, when we get to the land use concept, we can start really having a discussion about what's appropriate where. Or, and, is there something missing in these land uses that you guys would like to see in? So on the plan, you will see, scroll down just a touch for me, Josh. You'll see us calling out specific portions of the property as open space and amenity. So yeah, it would be from a financial, private side, we just want to fill as many private lots as we can on a piece of property, as many dwelling units as possible. We know as urban planners, urban designers, engineers, and architects, that those don't create neighborhoods that kind of, you know, age over time well. So we're looking to not only build something new that's nice, but in 20, 30, 40, 50, 60 years, how does it become a neighborhood that, you know, once you get past first ownership and then the second, third ownership, people continue to reinvest in and upkeep. So open space and amenity is a big part of that. The city, as you guys probably know, also has a requirement that when you develop property, certain portions of that property have to be reserved or dedicated as open space. So we'll see that. It could be plain green space, open space, or it could be active uses like playgrounds. The bottom-left picture could be more structural in nature that serves the neighborhood. So childcare is a popular one. We're seeing it in a lot of municipalities, because there's, it's pretty hard to find childcare. If you've looked recently. But yeah, open space and amenity can mean a lot of different things. And I think the next one, and again, this is where we're really, it's an example of kind of what we find through kind of that, the physical existing conditions. So when we're looking at like drainage systems and how to prepare for taking what is a field to something that's going to have a lot of impervious surface, so a lot of sidewalk, driveway, streets creates runoff, right? So we've got to account for that, but are there ways that you can, you can do more than just that utilitarian function? So on this particular property, there's a very clear drainage way that you'd see from the topography. So we do have that called out as a linear greenway or park. It could be something as simple as an off-street sidewalk, you know, not directly on the street or adjacent to the street, but it's going to be reserved, you're not going to build on it anyway. So how do you turn that into a feature that, again, creates some interest and some longevity to the community? So I think those are the easy ones, and then we'll get into some of the more difficult ones. So we're using the term "single-family traditional" here. I think I would probably, if I did this again, I would probably refer to it more as contemporary. So this is what I would say, like, this is your single-family subdivision that's being built now. 80 by 120-foot lots, somewhere between a fifth to a quarter of an acre detached units. Generally, garage kind of dominated in the front. Doesn't have to be like the picture on the left, but it's a product that's in demand, obviously. So we have it reflected in some particular areas. There are some similar developments directly surrounding this piece of property. And again, we're trying to be respectful of those adjacent land uses. So you'll see what we're calling a "single-family traditional" on the plan here in a second. Okay, so this is one that I don't, you probably don't have any recently-built products like this, but it is increasingly popular in our world. There are a number of them in Wichita that are happening. So we're going to, it's single-family detached units, generally characterized by owner-occupied. But instead of that garage dominating the front, the garage will be in the back, and you access your property through an alley. The way we build alleys now is a little different than the way we built alleys 70 years ago. But in the top-left picture and the bottom-right picture are both Wichita developments that we've worked on. The top-left, what you see in kind of in the bottom, is actually an Andover, Kansas. And those lots get down to the smallest 2,700 square feet per lot, which is aggressively small, but it, I mean, extremely valuable, not in terms of like costs, but valuable's not the right word, in demand in certain places. So we've accounted for that a little bit. We'll talk about some of the, and it's kind of a new concept for some. So I go in a little bit more detail on some subsequent, you know, diagrams we've put together. But yeah, single-family alley-loaded, we've had some, we've accounted for some of that in the concept.
How much of a yard is in those?
So it really depends. So, like, the ones on the left, the 20, so the upper-left, those 2,700, there's really not a lot of yard. So what I'll show you here in a few minutes is a way that you, a way you counter that. But that is one of the redeeming qualities that buyers have told us or told our clients. Not everybody wants the yard. We see a lot of, so this product in the top-left, we anticipated it being kind of a younger, you know, young professional-type market. And we actually see a lot of empty nesters and retirees looking at that, because there's not a lot of maintenance. And there's a lot of focus on kind of front porch living and more community. So it serves kind of a whole life cycle, but there's ways to counter the lack of open space or yard, and I'll show you an example here in a second. Okay, so not quite an engineer drawing. I tried, I didn't want to give you, you know, something real sciency, but it kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of what one of these neighborhoods laid out might look like. So both of them have public streets. So the houses, most of the structures will front on a public street. They will all have alley access in the back. Not all of them, as you can see, open directly onto a public street. So this is where you start getting into a little creativity, how you lay these out. So I'm going to step over here and I'll point at this one. So all of these ones are what we would call kind of your front porch alley-loaded development concept. So you guys have all been in neighborhoods probably that are somewhat like that. This is what we would call kind of a green court one. So these actually all front onto some sort of park. You can cluster them, so, which is, I don't know if I have an example of one of those or not, but we've done some of that in the Wichita area, to where you just have your alley, and then all the front doors lean open onto a little parklet, as they're called, or a small little park. So what you're trading off all of that private space in like a backyard essentially in this for more of a public space. So again, this is the way we build modern alleys. They can be really narrow, they can be really wide. But you'll notice one thing they all have in common is they're all concrete. We do that for a very particular reason, so, you know, asphalt, you generally have a quicker rehabilitation, maintenance schedule, concrete, not so much. There are ways, most cities are like, I don't want to plow the snow in there, or how's my trash truck going to get back there? Or what if somebody blocks it, you know, and I can't get through? There are ways that we put in subdivision flats to protect against some of that too, if that's a concern, but definitely in the weeds. But alleys can look a number of different ways, modern alleys. So we've used this term "townhome" in this concept. We've kind of taken it from your guys' definition and in your zoning regulations. So townhome can be, you know, I think most of the time when people think townhome, they think of like multiple things, multiple units, all connected. So we're using townhome as, and I've represented some of it here. What you see on the top-right, again, a Wichita product, actually in the College Hill neighborhood, if you're familiar with Wichita, that's probably a traditional-looking townhome. But the one on the bottom-right is actually a two-family unit on top of each other. So yeah, I don't like to use the word duplex, but we'll just use it, because we're all friendly at this point. But like duplex, you generally think of like two garages staring at you on either side. But there's ways through urban design that you can have that conversation, provide that product, and have it more compatible with adjacent land uses. So we're using the term "townhome," but it could be two, generally, let's say no more than six units connected in some fashion. And then we're, for this one, we're using garden apartment, not high-rise, not mid-rise, not low-rise. These are typically no more than three stories at the max, but most of the time you'll see that too. But very kind of traditional, what I would call suburban approach to multifamily. Each one of these, we've kind of used our subject matter expertise to come up with, okay, how many dwelling units, how many units per acre do you typically see? How big the units are, so like these typically, you know, 20 to 25 dwelling units per acre. So let's say, you know, one building maybe, not a lot, and just to kind of get a rough estimate of square footage. So those are all of the land use types that we've included. Again, our approach to that was try to provide as much different product as you can, being respectful to the piece of property that it's on and what's surrounding it, that accomplishes as many of the goals in your comprehensive plan and housing assessment tool as possible. So we will get, I'll get through and show you how we've placed them on a map, and then we'll get into us, you know, you guys' feedback, what's missing, what you don't like. Because again, my job is to take what you guys tell me, combine with our next steps, which I'll talk about, and then ultimately present this to the, you know, to the city commission, reflective of your guys' insight. So we'll go ahead and look at the concept. Go up and zoom in just a touch, maybe?
Yeah, we may just have to do parts of it or something.
Yeah, we can, you guys probably can't, so the yellow is some sort of single-family, for those who may be in the back that might not be able to read the text. What's in the yellow is all single-family. So on the, on the west side, and I'll just come up here and point, and I'll try to say it to you guys this way. So on the west here, this is all the single-family traditional. So what you would think of with a modernly-built, single-family subdivision. So there's roughly 12 and a half acres of that particular product here. The drainage way, based on the topography that we found, generally goes this way. So that is what I consider kind of a natural buffer area between different land uses. So this, we have shown as the same, single-family traditional, but could be a potential for one of those to transition to another use. So being respectful of what's happening in the county, and it's kind of what I would consider a lower, a less intensive use, is kind of how we, you know, fit the single-family traditional product there. We've transitioned a little bit in terms of like overall amounts of units as we go to the east. But again, being respectful of the single-family that's south of this site. So here is where we have the single-family alley-loaded product. So that could be the front porch ones, it could be the green court-fronting ones, it could be a combination thereof. But everything on the southern side of this property is some sort of single-family product. As we go north on the concept, is where we start to increase that level of intensity of use gradually. So we'll go up, these, this green area here and this pink area here. So again, we're looking to kind of locate a kind of an amenity or an open space or a park kind of in the center. Again, it kind of buffers these different uses. So we've got some higher intensity residential uses here, but you've got a street, you've got a park that's separating it from the traditional single-family. So we're blending the uses on 100 acres, but we're trying to strategically place it to buffer it, if you will. So as you get north, then we hit the amenity and the open space. We've got about 12 and a half acres here of townhomes, all the way up to the north on what is the east side of what we're showing as this primary kind of north-south road. Again, trying to really kind of match what's here. I don't want to propose something that's drastically more intensive of a product than what's here. So again, these can be two to six family units. I mean, it could be single-family alley-loaded as well, but that's the type of form we're looking at there. And then we've reserved this far north piece, directly off of that arterial road, as that's the one location, right through here, where you're showing some, the garden apartment land use type. Knowing that if I could arrange land uses on a piece of property perfectly, to be perfectly in harmony with what was happening outside, I would do it every time, but it's just not overly realistic. So you guys probably can't see it from where you're at, any of you. But what we've had here with this garden apartment, we've drawn some contours here to create some berms and some screening of that. There's obviously, you know, a very well-established treetop to the west as well. So, but we have taken that into account, that yes, there needs to be some buffering there. The red areas, the red hashes, are sidewalk systems. Again, going back to your con-plan, having walkable development, you know, to where hopefully we can eventually take this system down to the schools. We'll have to figure out how to cross all that floodway, which we'll do, that's what we figure out. But that's, that's an intention of ours throughout this as well.
What are the green squiggly lines? Are those proposed roads, or is that just how you divide it?
The green squiggly lines.
Well, from the top come down to the circle drive?
Yep.
Are those proposed roads to get out of the?
Yeah, that's just a real rough alignment of kind of what I'd consider the major transferred streets, but knowing that it can kind of shift every, like, we try to place streets as being somewhat strategic from function, but also kind of to buffer land uses.
It doesn't need to be that way. It could be our, whatever.
Josh, where is, excuse me, where is compass point?
It's right here. It's right here.
That is a really nice-looking development. I've gone out and looked at it, and I think that's one of my best, well, areas.
Are you considering like a cul-de-sac there with a park in the center, or something of that nature where the green is?
Yeah, I mean, it could definitely, in addition to what we're showing in black here. Like you talked, like coming off of this in a cul-de-sac? Yeah. Yeah, we didn't get into that level of detail of showing those kind of final connection pieces of streets. I mean, everything, like, just for an example, we did it here, because I wanted to make sure it was scaled appropriately, but, so this is a street with a cul-de-sac essentially, but just in terms, because this is a scaled drawing. We, I didn't want to show you something and be like, oh, you can't fit a street in there, or it's awkward. So here, I would imagine there's multiple streets through here. That's almost 22 acres, just this bottom yellow part. So we didn't get into really drawing that level of detail, because that's a lot of what happens with you guys through the subdivision process and all of that, so.
Josh, is this property to be offered to potential buyers, developers?
That's the intention.
And therefore, it would be their decision as to what type of towns they build, or residents they build.
Final decision would, yeah.
So how are we going to zone it?
So what we would do is take this plan and zone it the way we want it to look. And some of these properties may be in cases, especially with townhomes. You could have a case where people own a townhome that share a wall. In order for us to do that, we'd have to do a planned unit development, which comes through planning commission, so you guys would be able to see all the little details of what's going on there. Yeah, and that's really, like, when you're at the concept plan like this, like, yeah, what will get built there, assuming, like, will be, like, I haven't in 15 years done the concept, and it got built exactly that way, but we're trying to communicate to the private side, like, you know, this is what we're interested in. And then you don't have to only take the development that comes to you as a city. Again, I worked for a city for a long time. This is how you kind of influence some of those decisions. But yeah, you guys will play a major part in what it really looks like at the end.
So this development would have different zoned areas?
Most likely would have more ones in district.
Yeah, because you've got your high-density.
Yeah, and then the single-family.
You've got your R2.
Yeah.
Zoning is the simplest way for us to control it, but we also, we're often fine-grained.
Are these drawings in our packet?
Yeah, in fact, this is, this is actually the packet. And of course.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, later on, we'll also have them.
So what recommendations are you giving for the city as far as skyline? Because that's super narrow now. And then eight streets for more traffic?
Yep.
None of the streets around there, except for 15, are really suitable for any more traffic.
Yeah, I'll do, let's see, I think I've got one more slide, and then I've got a slide in there specifically about traffic and weather improvements. And I think it's important for us to hit this, so you understand the traffic stuff that I'm, that I'm going to recommend to you. So when we were going through the individual slides for the, we had the dwelling unit per acre. And so here, this is taking that assumption, that range for the different land use types, combining it with the amount of acreage we're proposing on the land use, and coming up with what we think at full build-out, how many dwelling units you'll add to the city through this piece of property. So again, you can see the typology or the different land uses that we've talked about, the amount of acreage that's provided on the concept we just reviewed, dwelling unit per acre assumption that we've talked about, and the number of units that that would result in. So you can see, it's predominantly, about two-thirds of what we're showing on the 101 acres is a single-family in some way. And then you've got another one-third that's kind of multifamily, if we want to use that term. And then there's obviously open space and park areas. So assuming a pretty wide range here of dwelling units per acre have full build-out, we would anticipate this to have somewhere between 277 and 506 dwelling units, when it's fully developed. This accounts for, you know, streets and easements and drainage and all of that. So we generally will take about 70 to 80% of a raw piece of ground that's developable. So all of those assumptions are baked into that. So somewhere between 277 and 506 dwelling units. That's important for us on our side, because that's. That's important for us on our side because that's how we project vehicles demand is dwelling units, one way. So now to answer your specific question on the next slide. These are, I'm going to give you the big disclaimer about traffic. There are traffic and traffic demand. So the amount of vehicles that are using your roads is very highly dependent on specific developments. So I'm going to give you some real broad, real broad, real rough estimates with the disclaimer that I have no idea how those trips will be distributed. So yeah, I can say, um, we're going to make an assumption that every dwelling unit generates ten vehicle trips a day. That's kind of a, a really coarse rule that's been along for longer than I've been alive. Some developments will have three vehicle trips a day and, you know, some will have thirty trips a day. It just depends on who's living there, what type of product it is and the way the streets was. But let's just go with that assumption for now is ten trips per day per dwelling unit. Using two hundred and seventy-seven or five hundred and six new dwelling units means we're going to add somewhere between, let's just call it twenty-seven hundred and five thousand trips per day coming out of and going to the state. I don't know where they're gonna go, right? So if I'm living, so yeah, I can add five thousand to eighteen hundred, I guess sixty-eight hundred, right? Are all five thousand trips gonna take eighth street? No, and that's the distribution, right? That's the, I don't know what that is. So do I then, so do I add three thousand to eighth street and one thousand to, to skyline and the remainder to fifteenth? I don't know, right? Like, so I don't, I can't tell you for sure. But I can give you kind of some baselines and a bare minimum. So, uh, if I look at just kind of a real high level, planning level capacity of a roadway. And these are from the Federal Highway Administration. So generally a two lane road, the most basic road that you can have, um, around a thousand vehicles per day. Up to almost twenty thousand, eighteen. So it's depending on how it functions and the land juices that are next to it. So if you're real, like, there's not a lot of driveways, not a lot of other streets on it. Then yeah, like, there's not a lot of complexity to that, so it can carry more vehicles faster and safer, but.
But what's the true width of a two lanes? I'm going strictly off skyline.
Yeah, skyline, I can't remember. I know I have it on there. Is it twenty-four feet of actual pavement?
Well, you can't take into consideration how much it's gone on the outsides and where it's broken off and there's, I live on skyline.
It's got, so yeah, two lane and then.
And it's, I think you're seven fifty-five, I don't know how accurate that is, but since, since compass point's been built and now Creekstone, most, a lot of their workers. So I think that's a very low for that skyline.
Yeah, I mean, it was two thousand twenty-two, I think is when the count was from KDOT. So obviously some things have changed. Let's say you double it and you go to fifteen, right? Or sixteen, uh, like, so in terms of capacity and carrying, kind of carrying capacity of a road. That's one reason to look at road improvements. But another is just at what point, because I think skyline, skyline's east west. Yeah, that's just wanted to make sure, yeah, that's the one on the north end. So there's a portion of skyline that has been fully improved, what I would consider an urban improvement. The way we call it curbing gutter drainage. I think it's concrete, right?
Yep.
So as you continue development, when do you go from what I would consider a rural or suburban street section? Which is just like generally asphalt ditch drainage section, um, is different in every community. I'd say most commonly, um, in a community in a situation like this. There's some sort of relationship between whoever's developing the piece of property to do some sort of improvement to the adjacent arterial. But as you guys know, you know, in serving in your capacity, uh, arterials serve more than just the development that's directly adjacent. So there is a citywide function for arterial streets. So that's why you don't typically see, I can't think of any community that requires, uh, arterial improvements to be fully paid for by a development, but there's generally a relationship there. So, uh, Josh, do you guys have, in your guys' subdivision regulations, have any requirements for arterial improvements? Not really. I mean, there's, there's the, you know, width and stuff like that, but not so much as to what would be required of a developer. Yeah. It's not really. The unimproved portion or the not improved is probably twenty-four foot roughly pavement section with asphalt. Yeah, what you have here, the skyline, the unimproved was twenty foot and well, and eighth street. True, yeah. Twenty foot chip seal? Chip seal or asphalt, depending on which, which street you're talking about.
And just knowing that most likely the garden apartment section up there would be the very first thing developed out there.
It is, we'll talk about some phases and it's, uh, uh, it very well could be. Like, yeah, there's no major impediment to the sequencing of developing of that property like there is on some of this.
Which is forcing all your traffic that way. So I'm getting that.
Yeah, so I mean, you put a, you put a, you know, fifty dwelling units, you know, apartment there, let's say. You add five hundred vehicles per day. Let's say, let's assume you double even what you were in two thousand twenty-two, which I think is extremely conservative. You're at eighteen, you're plus minus two thousand vehicles per day. Can a twenty foot weathering surface road accommodate two thousand vehicles per day? Yes. Is it the decision for the municipality that it wants that to carry it? It's up to each individual city. But my side, you know, if I had a developer client and we were doing that, even at like, you know, on the city side. You know, one of the last things I did before I left the city is we were kind of redo, you know, the policies for that particular city about this very subject. The typical requirement is to upgrade it from gravel to some sort of weathered surface. And generally somewhere between twenty and twenty-four feet thereof. Anything wider than twenty-four feet or twelve foot travel lanes, you start to have some other complications. But, uh, yeah. Does it need three lanes or four lanes? Absolutely not. None of this will ever need that barring some sort of change to the concept here. But going from kind of a rural suburban hybrid street section of twenty foot ass, you know, chip seal to a twenty-four foot asphalt mat, like an actual asphalt mat, not chip seal. Yeah, that's going to have to happen at some point. When that requirement and how that is funded is completely up to municipality, how that works. So yeah, just to kind of communicate scale of street improvements. People see five hundred dwelling units and they're like, oh man, we're going to need like three lanes, you know, two travel lanes, center turn lane. Like, is there a, a situation where you might get a concentration on eighth street and, uh, a stop sign no longer works? There's too much of a delay, maybe. I highly doubt it. I mean, we've got, uh, you know, two lane arterial roads carrying twenty thousand vehicles without any sort of delay or issue everywhere. So your traffic volumes here aren't really the driver for improvements. It's, you know, organizational desire and really missed the pay, in my opinion.
Josh, on the west end of radio lane, by now the improvements the city has made, is how far past compass point does that go?
It doesn't. It goes to the edge.
So the city would probably end up doing some road work. Cause that's where crappy road is out there. Fifteenth isn't so bad, so.
Yeah, of all the sections of street, that section is definitely the worst around this.
And we'd have to, is that city property?
Yes, it would be in our jurisdiction.
Okay.
The only street that would not be truly in our jurisdiction is that north half of fifteenth. That would.
Where the state limits.
We would have to coordinate with the county or bring it into the city if we were going to do that.
But it would still need to be improved because especially skyline.
Would strongly agree with that. And different municipalities in my experience are different to, to where it looks like compass point. It was improved all the way to that west property line. So assuming, I'm making an assumption here that whoever develops that northeast. At that time, it would be improved to the west boundary of their ownership as well. Some communities only make you improve up to your access point. So if I put a street or driveway there, I only have to go through my driveway or street. But every community is a little bit different, so.
So is the sewer system that's there? Is it in drainage, I guess? Is it sufficient to for that increased runoff?
So I can answer the question, I can answer both of them, so I'll start with the sanitary. So we've looked at you guys' sanitary sewer collection system, both onsite and offsite. So you run that model through, you had an eight inch sewer line that buys and accepts that property. And then eventually feeds to bigger pipes as it gets further down the line, so more gates. We actually have, uh, a master plan, DUC produced a master sanitary sewer plan. And we've ran the five hundred and six dwelling units, the max that we're showing, and no capacity or treatment issues. Drainage wise?
Is that the, your little blue?
Yeah.
Blue water?
Yep.
Well, uh, Creekstone, are they on that big sewer line that's runs through that area?
Oh, you're talking about two different things here. So the sewer line comes out of compass point, it just kind of runs more or less right down.
And that's, that's the one, the new area is going to be, or is that Creekstone? What you just pointed?
Creekstone is the, the one that they, the Creekstone dumps out of goes along here.
Okay.
And we can't, we can't tie into it because it's treated.
Yeah.
But it's not part of.
So the one that is existing now?
That's what.
Is large enough capacity to handle all the impacts?
And you, you guys' sewer systems and, uh, you could shape from a capacity perspective. Same with water. We've looked at, uh, the water as well.
What school does that area use?
Jacerson.
Yeah, I think Jacerson is correct.
Maybe quite an increase.
That's where we want, that's part of why I wanted to do the, the open house at the school district. Present, but I'm, we're inviting them specifically to go to that. And if they're still not there, we will, the city will. Cause they're a very important stakeholder. Cause that could, I mean, five hundred thousand, you just think about how many kids that could possibly be.
That's right.
It's very, very high.
It's scary.
Yeah.
I know we need the housing.
Yeah.
We just, we needed it for a long time, so.
Technically, there's a possibility of sticking a school in this somewhere if you had to.
Had to.
This will increase, not with the elementary, the junior, middle school.
Yeah, I know, there's a, there's a number of other properties within the city that are owned by the city. That I think as you go forward and you start thinking about where, you know, what the built environment looks like over the next ten, twenty, thirty years. Is yet, you know, that, that open conversation with the school district about where it makes sense for additional schools in scenarios where you build out is super important. We see communities that do good at that and we see others that do not. So it, it definitely goes a lot more smoothly and it's a, it's a benefit. I mean, like, you know, our clients that are, that develop, like, they're looking for neighborhoods that are near schools and where schools are part of the neighborhood. Which is a little different than the way schools are being built now, where they just kind of go out in the outskirts of town. Build all of them on one piece of property and then all the kids have to get bused. And then you can't hire bus drivers, so that's a problem.
That's already a problem, yeah.
Yeah, it is in every community and it's like, well, maybe, maybe we build schools where kids can walk in and ride bikes again. Instead of out in the middle of nowhere.
Yep.
And I think from here, Josh, I think the next slide might be, I think we're into phasing now. So to answer one of the conversations here, so again, we're just looking for availability of utilities primarily. But we've got, uh, there we go. So we would anticipate the southwest corner. As, so what you see in red is where utilities are largely available. So that means minimal kind of offsite improvements needed. So ready to develop is another way. So both of those areas in red, um, then you'd want to connect them hopefully with that second phase, which is in blue. And then we would project the rest of it way further down the road more than likely and that phase. Portions of that phase three would probably have to get improved with a couple of those others because of that drainage way. But those are the types of details we can't really answer until we start getting some survey and start running some kind of, you know, hydrology, um, studies. But we would anticipate there's probably some improvement there that would need to happen. All could completely change, phase one A could be phase one A, one B, one C, one D. You could skip around, but this is our, this is the way we would advise a, a, a landowner that, uh, play with the squares, the size of the squares, but you need to be in that general area.
And is that what, we need single family homes mainly? Is that what we need, you know?
I, I think the distribution of this is pretty accurate based on.
You can probably do a little about.
As a landlord, the request I always got was single family. Never had anybody call and ask for an apartment or anything like that.
It's definitely going to be.
Or twin homes they would do, but I never had anybody request for, pretty much want single homes.
And that's what you're trying, on a hundred acres like this, that's a lot of dwelling units, that's a lot of things, can be a lot of things. You know, the way I describe it is you, what you're really trying to do is you're trying to completely, you're trying to create a complete neighborhood. To where if situations in your life change, uh, maybe you don't have to move to the other side of town or another city, right? But like, you're still in the same general area. So you're trying to provide what I consider kind of life cycle housing, uh, to where, yeah. I and my thirteen year old and ten year old and wife can live in a house that's got four or five bedrooms and three bathrooms. But I don't have to be ten miles away from my, you know, my, my mom who's single and, and, you know, like. So that's what you're trying to do is find a, kind of a balance. And that's really communicated in your guys' comprehensive plan and housing assessment tool is that, that mix. An appropriate mix of different types of housing.
Are you able to answer questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
State your name, please.
Red House, I live in Vaughn Forest Glen, just on the other side of the phase one A down there. I have a couple of ideas, a couple of questions. One of them is building on what Mr. Jelling's asked and I wasn't really clear on what you were talking about. When we're talking about those phases, especially phase one, the amount of impact that's going to have on those roads, especially I live off of eighth street. It's a ditch drainage. I mean, literally, and we have flooding problems when it rains now, right now. You go throw in more housing in there and more drainage into that, that's going to be an issue. Are we talking about redoing those roads? Cause I mean, it's going to have to be done over to that phase one B that's up off of skyline and all the way down eighth street. Because of the impact of the school system, the, the high school is right over there. It's already a major thoroughfare for high school traffic and eighth and, uh, eighth and radio, as anybody knows that's ever been there during high school time. It is a disaster to try to get through there. It is a real, it is a real problem. And that eighth and, and skyline will, I, God, I hope you guys make that. Those will have to be done before this even starts. But, um, that's, that's one of my questions. If you have a plan for that, wasn't really clear on that. The other thing is too, with the phases. The other thing is too, with the phases, I know in our neighborhood, you're talking about, which I really enjoy, listening to what you said because that's exactly what I asked for, a blending of things. Because Forest Glen is where I live, is single family dwellings, two hundred thousand plus homes. I don't want something that's a hundred thousand dollars on the other side of my fence. Neither do any of those other property owners. We don't want to lose value in the asset that we put there and neither does anybody else. I mean, Compass Point has value there and they don't want to lose their value from that either. So that's, that's the one, the two major things I just want.
Like Forest Glen is a really nice neighborhood.
It, it's a super nice neighborhood and we're all, neighbors are all really close. We're all very passionate about our neighborhood. I know I've been in here before about things and I'm super passionate about it and I try to motivate people in that, in that realm. And that's, you know, that's just our fear is we love it. I love living there. I don't want to be forced to have to think I have to move somewhere else because my asset that I have lived there for fifteen years on is going to be diminished because we're doing other things. I know we need expansion, I know we need houses, but the right level of blending and the right level of advantagement for that is what I'm really looking for.
No, that's definitely what we look for. So to answer the drainage question first. Typically, so our requirement generally when we do developments is to assess kind of the pre-development patterns and volume of drainage or stormwater runoff. Compare it to the post development. So we lay out our streets and lots and make sure that that volume is the same. Or a lot of times it's actually reduced, but we reduce it too much, it's just as bad as increasing it, right? Because that water is going somewhere that someone's depending on in some way. So we look at the pre-development and post-development implications from a stormwater runoff or drainage perspective. A lot of times in a situation like this, we, you will actually see improvements, even though you'll see like the amount of impervious ground, right? Since it's just dirt, so absorbs a lot of it. Even though you see an increase in that, you'll see, you'll experience a more structured and designed approach to drainage. So you'll see some benefits generally. I can't answer the question specifically because we don't have the hydrology study that we would do. But it would very much be studied during the development. And Josh and Heather said they're going to require me, as engineers, meet that requirement to make it no worse, hopefully improve. In terms of the street improvements themselves. In terms of just like, you know, lanes and pavement type. Generally, I would advise a developer that you should probably account for some cost participation in those improvements. And typically you would do that through, you know, petition or whatever. And it would be done the same time or before any of the local streets were built. But a lot of that gets played out in the plating process and, you know, development agreement process. And comes before you guys and you tell us what to do and so, yeah. Any sort of impacts outside of the site from an infrastructure perspective would be clearly identified during the plating process and part of the development. And did I hit everything?
I believe so, yes. From what I can remember, what I said.
Same.
Little multi-focused, but yes, thank you, thank you very much for explaining.
Short question too. I'm Janice House. And I know this is farther on into the plan, but you were talking about the houses being the front loaded and then having the big alleys that were paved and stuff. Do you find, and I mean, is that like more cost to the city than too? Because you're talking or, I mean, you're talking pavement on front and back now as opposed to, I mean, is that a huge increase in cost for the city?
So it's generally an increase in costs, at least on the upfront costs, so the construction costs for the developer. The way you counter out, you won't ever see, I should take that back, there's actually one in Bel Air where it's kind of your standard lot size. You'll only generally see alley loaded developments when the lot sizes are small. So gen- like, yeah, let's say it's going to cost a million dollars to do all of the streets and the alleys. And there's a hundred lots, you're going to split that evenly across all the lots. So you generally have to increase your lot size or the number of people paying it to pay to increase the cost.
I guess my question is because we're already kind of having a problem with the city of getting streets and stuff taken care of. As the long term effect of that, because now you're kind of doubling the streets for the city to take care of so that somebody doesn't have any grass.
So. Yeah, so the upfront upfront costs are typically borne by the developers, right? Long term, so the life, like in perpetuity, right? Somebody's got to maintain these things, right? So what we have typically done and with a lot of our developments that have that is again, during the plating process, I'm sure a number of you probably live in a community with an HOA that's governed by covenants. A lot of times, and you know, and Josh probably reviews those, at least from a cursory perspective during a plating project. A lot of times we will put private maintenance requirement of the alleys. This includes snow removal, this includes rehabilitation, so it's up to the HOA to do that. It's typically how we do that. We haven't got into a situation in, you know, you're talking twenty-five to forty years, depending on who's using that concrete street and alley before you need to do anything. So I haven't got into a situation yet to where the HOA is like, I didn't know, we were supposed to do that and we can't do that. And a city having to step in, is that a, is that a thing that needs to be considered? Sure. But that's one reason why they're in concrete.
Would you have much for HOA soon?
We have a handful. Country Club Estates is one for sure. Crestwood, I think, has one, but they don't have true covenants anymore.
I think we have one, but they don't follow it.
Yeah.
I think it's one of, I think Forest Glen is supposedly has an HOA, I'm pretty sure when I bought my house.
It's the same one where they. I think Kimberly has to. But I think the main one that has a lot of teeth that actually does use it is Country Club Estates.
Yeah. Yeah, most of it, like in HOA, like in terms of like an organization that's active and enforcement and collecting dues, like that's one thing. But like any of the things that's got reserves for drainage or parks will have some sort of entity that's created. Whether or not it's an organization that has, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? And like articles of information and then all of that is that, like this will have some sort of entity that's created that's responsible to maintain the drainage ponds and all of that, whether it's up to the developer if it's.
So your drainage right here, like on Phase Three, where does that dump into then?
Into the, is it an actual river? Like what is the waterway that's just out?
It's the, it's C Street canal. It, it eventually dumps it just north of the high school.
So that would be like an emergency spillway to dump into that or will it continuously flow through?
Uh, no, it won't continuously flow because that would generally, I was like, I doubt there's a real high volume there now, so water moving. That's why we'll pond there, we'll detain there and then let out controlled.
Because there's a massive volume of water, so when it rains hard, it, it actually takes out a town, a compass and goes north and then floods Skyline.
Yeah, those are the types of things when this develops will improve. Because right now it's taking its natural course, right? Which is fine, like we will, that's how you do drainage, right? You use the natural features, you just design improvements to handle it better. So, yeah, that will, that will function a lot, in a lot more efficient rate once this is developed.
Any more questions?
I think the, I got one more slide and then I know I was late and I kept you guys late. Your drive's probably shorter than mine, but. The next steps, so I've got some notes over here. We definitely close if there's any, you know, if you guys have any other questions or comments, Josh will, you know, forward me anything if you think of something tonight or whatever. But on July twenty-third, we're going to be doing an event at which church?
So we'll do it at the Church of the Nazarene, which is at Eleventh and Radio Lane. That's, we're firming that up now because we've got to. But, yeah, that'll, that'll be the location.
So I won't be doing a presentation at that. You guys, you know, like got the pleasure of that, so, but there, well, I've got a structured public open house to where we'll be come and go. There's no presentation, there'll be different stations for you guys, you know, for attendees and participants to kind of play with the concept and give us their feedback. Postcards should be going out this week to everyone within, I think, two hundred feet, so you just probably get one. So we're, and then we're going to be, be doing personal invitations to various stakeholder groups, the schools, realtors, all kinds of groups that we've identified. So that's the next step. I'll take any of the feedback you all give over the next week or so. Please, by all means, you're invited to come to this, planning commission included. We'll take all of that information and revise as needed in conjunction with city staff and then we'll present the final concept to the commission and the office. And then they'll tell us, you guys will all tell us what to do next. And I think that's it, right, Josh? I don't think I have anything else on there.
Do we have any more questions for Lance? Well, thank you very much.
Well done.
Appreciate it.
Well, of course, so a pleasure to work on it. I continue to, we're not done yet. Again, I apologize for being late, so.
We'll see you on the twenty-third.
See you on the twenty-third.
We have two developments of apartments now. One up by, one off of Bryan Road. And the other one is.
Well, we also have Meadow Walk, which is right there at Ethan Radio or Ethan Skyline. And then there's another one that's a little bit further east of there along the skyline. It's just kind of west of the Skyline Plant. So we really have three. And then, of course, you also have Lakeview Estates, that's sort of a multifamily.
Well, I'm talking about like two-story apartment type thing, we have two.
We really just have two that are the multi-story.
Yeah.
Around West Kansas.
Yeah, is that two-story? I think it is.
What's that?
So Thirteenth and Fourteenth and.
Walms.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one of them.
Yeah, I mentioned that. Thirteen, Kansas.
Yeah, I think those are all two-story.
Yeah. Yeah, it's all one, thirteen, fourteen area.
Are they on the south side? Those are single story.
Maybe they are.
Some of them are single. I think some of them are two. Some, I think they're the mix of, of both.
That would have.
They, they used to be, I was saying there was those two complexes on Fourteenth and then I thought, you know, just.
Yeah, it's, it's Westwood, Westwood Villa. At some point, I think some of them are two and some of them are single.
Two now, one day, then two, twin homes.
Yeah, because they're all two complexes, but they are two-story.
Yeah, nice looking. Yeah. Yeah, school definitely might be involved.
Yeah, because I mean, if you think about it, if it was truly the five hundred in, your standard, your family, two adults, two kids, that's.
That's it.
Now, that's obviously the really high end.
The big thing is how you communicate about that development to the schools. There's so sidewalks off the right.
Yes, there you go.
And that is a big deal.
All that development. And actually, that's already something that the city's talking about and it's even without any of this. Because you've already got a compass point, you got another one up there.
There's a lot of blocking traffic on Eighth.
It's already.
On there on the road.
On the road.
That's a promise, there's a lot of talking.
Got to talk first. Yeah, got to talk first.
Well, and as far as for the school, the school actually owns that property back behind Forest Glen to the, to the west.
Is there still talk about moving the middle school over there?
I heard rumors, just like what you're obviously hearing.
I've heard rumors.
But I haven't heard anything that had anything concrete, so.
Anything concrete, okay.
The end of the, do you have anything else, Jones?
Uh, no more items. I would just add that at the, there will be, there's at least one reason going to happen at the August meeting. Maybe even a second one if he gets the application to me.
August, go ahead.
So that'll be August.
Second Tuesday?
Second Tuesday, whatever that is. I'm triggered.
Thirteen.
Thank you.
Yeah, thirteen.
Any further discussion on this? If there's nothing more, can I have a motion?
Litner German.
I'm seconded.
Most, any further discussion? All phases, eighty-five, bye?
Bye.
Bye. And I would encourage anybody to attend that open house.
Yes.
Are you going to put that on the city website and stuff, please?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of waiting for the, they're going to make postcards.
And later we'll see you. Whatever.
That's why I.
I'll get it too, yeah. I'll have a look.
So you have. It's a nice place.
That's something else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking. Yeah, they're also there.
It's a summer.
It's just, it's just got turned out and it's kind of a kind of, you know, to the side.
They've told them.
I think they're either kind of safer than that.
Yeah, those are, those are kind of just.
Yeah. They have.
Can see the most of our base.
They're really do me. When you're safer than already.
It's true.
The school, like every example, wasn't going to work. Not such.
Having that.
I mean, actually, it's.
Which actually.
It's important, right?
Why I.
You know, they.
Most stuff.
But I mean, that was originally. He said. White trash stuff.
That was.
Actually, it's.
It's. I'm sorry. I'm chance.
Right here.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
But there were cases too.
Well, that's my trouble, that's why
I think that's
Did your Oh, it's kind of
No. That's not one of them.
Yeah.
It's not. Yeah. It's not proper. No, no. We don't really
It's my
So, we don't, we don't all like we are You guys We used to have
Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
I've been to the, I've been to the city since July twenty eighth. But I've been doing this for
It's one of those things
Process because that's what, that's our fear is I don't think you said don't sit in the car
That was a pattern.
Well, it's like And then when I moved last time Apparently also
Interesting that.
I do it And it's hard.
We don't have the We
We
Tell me about I'm researching How do you open Actually, I'm just I act like so, I don't I just
Yeah.
So, they're on a
She got a little She got back on Right on.
Yeah.
Let's save She got
Subscribe to the other one.
It's more of that. You were Very good.
We haven't, we haven't had that. We were still
Right.
Yes. That would be
It makes a lot Like, I don't think you're So Just like we Bro say it's just You know, it's just, it's up to the Good. It would See, they, they, they mostly do. So, it's like, yeah, we did I didn't know Or you can hire another
Yeah.
They still So, it's So, at least like Well, yeah, that's what I'm gonna say.
So, when you ask for a hard copy?
That's right. And then whoever's designing We sure do, so whoever wants, they do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I always, in fact, I
It was very much
Yeah. Because I had so much difficulty with that, I wish I was just
Yeah.
Always write a fan. I don't want to
A total
Some kind of
Yeah. Well, that's a lot of need.
And I'm almost Yeah. That one looks like
Yeah.
I just That's the
That's what they did, city cars
Yeah.
Yeah.
You were
Really Now, something like this
Oh, you're sorry, yeah.
I'm falling back.
Yeah.
Surprisingly
So, good.
Try to
Right.
Unrealistic butt jokes.
Yep. But you try to account for that, you gotta And so, it's
Yeah.
If you retain them Obviously So, it's all when it gets there. So, I'll send that there. To Services and Then I'll support it there. And get you crew Tiring there. But Chris
This is something like So, and obviously
Dude.
And I actually know several people.
Just the girl We gotta meet it I love I don't think she was well liked. I think she basically was fat role So, she was
Uh
To me, that was
Thanks, guys. Be like
Okay. So, we have A lot of stuff that you
Yeah. I tried to follow on my thing when I was just like
I mean, I would just some
Yeah. Yeah.
And we, we were really informal, just
Yeah.
Didn't want to
We should have tried.
That's When we first started with this, I was trying to figure out how do we get that This is what I want people to show up and feel comfortable.
Show their
So You don't have anyone cutting in there.
Right.
Like you knew my
Right.
Well, we gotta get back on ourselves, we gotta get out of here.
Yeah.
If, if there's still people, a bunch of people at seven o'clock that, and they're still asking questions, I'm not going there.
Yeah.
And besides that, I'm the, the, the site facilitator.
Right.
So, we're there till nine o'clock, we're there till
Right.
That's fine. I won't be grumpy the next day. But I'll stay up every morning if we need to.
Yeah.
We can, we can always do stuff to make people kind of start taking stuff down, start setting chairs and
Right, yeah.
That won't actually push Yeah, PDC may want to
Yeah, he's got to drive.
Guessing I think he's bringing, he'll be bringing probably at least one person.